Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Council members, city officials, and also our home audience. Welcome to the May 29th City Council meeting. We have ten items on our agenda this evening. We have another one to add to make it a total of eleven. At this time, if you would, would you please call the roll members? Mr. Fosson.
Tatman.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Neal.
Here.
Kearney. Hines.
Here.
Florima.
Here.
Fairchild. Corcoran.
We have a few absent. I think maybe some are still coming in. At this time, if everybody would, please stand for the Pledge of Legions. Pledge of Legions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes from the previous meeting have been distributed for review. If everybody has reviewed the minutes, do we have a motion to accept them? I am willing to accept by Mr. Florima, seconded by Mr. Hines. Roll call on that motion.
Tatman.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Hines.
Here.
Florima.
Yes.
And Corcoran.
Yes. Whatever.
All right. And to note, Ms. Corcoran has come in. So we have seven members here this evening, and the minutes to the previous meeting have been accepted as read. As we, I want to tell the audience first here this evening, I put the camera back in that kind of goes wild every so often when I move it. I apologize for that, but we're going to try to move it as little as possible tonight and maybe only have it go off kilter a couple, three times. So bear with us. The other camera bit the dust, so we're getting very low on cameras here, but at least this one moves. At this time, we do have our reports from committees. Anybody like to report at this time? Your table first.
My table first?
Your table first. Everybody over there. Mr. Tatman. Camera will be with you here in a minute. Just took off. Get right ahead.
All right. Thank you, President Arnold. Tonight, the Engineering Committee has number four, number five, number six, and number ten. Item seven. Seven. Oh, let's see. What? Anyhow, number four on the agenda is a grant, an encroachment on public right-of-way 497 North High Street. This is relevant to a garage and property that's actually an easement on Yacht Township, but Ms. Patrick wants to address that issue, so when she gets a chance, she wants to discuss letting this easement go through. Number five, appropriation of $284,953.48 towards a paving program, and this also might be in finance, but I'm not sure. But number six is the appropriation of $5,609 to reimburse contractor permit application overpayment. And do we need to push this through, Luke? Okay. So at the appropriate time, I'll ask that we waive the three-day rule. And how about number five? Do you want to go ahead and push that through?
Yes.
Okay. So number five will be pushed through, waived the three-day rule when we get to it. Number ten is approve the action of the Paving Commission for the rezoned property on 456 Western Avenue. This will have to go through all three reads because we will have to have a public meeting, and I believe Mrs. Fosson has scheduled it for July 9th. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tatman. Anybody else over there who have a committee report? No. Ms. Neal?
Development Committee doesn't have any items on tonight's agenda, but we have two outstanding assignments. One is for the food truck legislation. That has been in the Law Director's office since April 24th, and I received notification from them this week that it was just a statement that said the legislation was nonenforceable. So I think our next step is going to be to meet with that committee again, invite the Law Director, and ask her what is not enforceable, and try to work through those issues. So as soon as I get a date with her that's agreeable, we'll announce a committee meeting. And the second thing I have is the leasing of land to the National Guard. That also is in the Law Director's office since April 24th, and I have no other information on that, even though I've followed that a couple of times. So I'll wait to hear and report from the Law Director. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much for the updates.
Thank you.
Any other? Joel or Aaron? Okay. We'll vote for the other table. I'll try to. Actually, no. Okay. We're good. All righty. Ms. Frock.
Finance Committee has a couple items on tonight's agenda. Item number eight, which is to authorize the Service Department to use appropriated capital funds to repair a city-owned vehicle. That's a first reading, and at the appropriate time, I will ask that we waive the three-day Number nine authorizes the auction of miscellaneous items, including city-owned vehicles and equipment, which are not needed for public use or are obsolete or unfit for use. And that is at first reading. We will need to waive the three-day rule on that item. Now, our Special Committee has one item, which is a third reading, item number two, which is dealing with the strategic plan. It is to support the 2018 Chillicothe City Council Strategic Plan that we've worked on together, and this will be for final reading and approval tonight. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Frock. Any questions? Ms. Corcoran?
Yes. Thank you, President Arnold. This evening, I just have one item, which is item number one, the third read to authorize the City of Chillicothe to accept donations for the city's annual Fourth of July fireworks display. And if someone is interested in participating or donating, you may contact the Parks and Recreation Department. Thank you. That's all I have.
And Ms. Patrick?
Thank you, President Arnold. The Utilities and Transit Committee would like to add an item to tonight's agenda, and it's an ordinance appropriating $2,280,000 to fund the Transit Department Roscoe Program and declaring an emergency. So I'd like to make a motion to waive the three-day receipt.
I have a motion to waive the three-day receipt, seconded by Mr. Florima. Roll call on that motion, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And we have waived the three-day receipt rule on that, and that will be on the agenda as item number eleven this evening.
Okay. And what this is, is Transit's Roscoe Program has run by leaps and bounds. They went from approximately $10,000 a month in revenue to $200 now. So we have picked up another contract, and our only obligation is to pay the bills. The invoices will be all verified by the other entity. We just pay it, and for doing that, we get 25 cents for every mile.
It's not bad. It's not bad at all.
Yeah. Which ends up being close to $250,000 in revenue for the city. So at the appropriate time, since we do have invoices that do need paid, I'd like to waive the three-day rule and cast this tonight.
Thank you very much.
And I'd like to touch on what Councilman Tatman said about item number four. This, I went down and looked at the property. There is a garage that had been built, and it's partially on City Right-of-Way. It's a vacant lot except for the garage. Right there, it is in violation of zoning, which can't have an accessory building without a residence on it. So several years ago, when Jack was mayor, there was plans floated around about the right-of-way for Yacht Township. They wanted to widen it. And if those plans were going to effect, then we'd have this problem with this piece of property. It's my understanding the lady would like to sell it, but as we do with condemned property, you cannot sell that property until you bring it up to code or have a plan to bring it up to code that is approved by the Building Department. So I would think for her to sell it, she would have to bring this into conformity, or the new owner would agree to bring it into conformity.
So how would you remedy that? By removal?
Part of it. Take the part that's on city.
Okay.
It looks like it's in two sections anyway.
Oh, okay.
But that's my concern about this one. You don't want to start giving away City Right-of-Way.
Right. So it's essentially a cloud right now?
To make note, there's about four properties down through there to all, in the same situation.
But that particular property's got, gonna have a cloud untitled because of that issue.
Unless they're branded misused by the city.
Right.
And then you start doing that, where do you stop?
I just have a question on the indemnity agreement that's attached to that proposed legislation. My reading of it is that if the city says it needs to use that right-of-way, they have to give it up. So I don't know if that influences how you feel about the legislation, but I just wanted to point that out before there's any decision.
Thank you for doing that. But to be honest, I would personally like to correct the problems now instead of passing them on to the next council. But that was my concern about that property.
Mayor, have you got anything to add to this, or are you aware of this one?
To be honest, this is not a topic that I'm well versed in.
Okay. We might, we might want to do something with this before it goes through and verify what we are doing. So my options are, what, Mr. Corcoran?
You can move not to read it tonight.
Right.
Or you can move to commit. It's up to you. Or let it pass later.
Well, I'd like to have some clarity to make sure, because I wasn't aware of, you know, the problem that it might cause if we do.
So we can just let it go through tonight?
We still have another read.
We have one more read, right?
We still have another read.
We've got more reads before vote.
So, and even if it's not resolved by next meeting, you can stop it.
Can we hold the read the next time?
Yeah.
I'd probably do that. Sorry.
Let go.
That's all I've got. That's let go.
Do you have next meeting? Okay.
Then Mr. Fosson will let me know the proper ways to do it.
I'll give you some options. Okay. We will. Okay. Any, anything else? And now a report from our mayor, Mr. Lupe.
Thank you, President Arnold. Just commenting on tonight's agenda items. I believe that five, six, eight, and nine, along with newly added eleven, were those where passage tonight was requested, and I support all of those. To echo Councilwoman Patrick's sentiment about number eleven, we basically picked up a vendor, transportation vendor, that appears to be doing as much transporting as, seems like close to everybody else combined, and that shouldn't tax our resources too much further, but should generate some nice income for transit. And in this situation, it generates income that is not tied up by ODOT in essence, so it's still transit, committed to transit, but we have more flexibility, and that's always a good thing within transit. So I think all these were discussed in committee. Five, the paving allows us to do some of that expansion that we discussed with City Engineer Carrolls. Rather, what's the word? Good presentation. Must be hot. I didn't have anything, I didn't have a better synonym. And of course, item six, we try to pay somebody who hasn't paid twice. And item eight, I think, is a good use of already appropriated money. So, and then of course, item nine, all of our city departments have worked hard to have our own bit of spring cleaning and our auctions, so it would be nice to clear out a lot of that old junk. I would like to wish and thank all of our veterans for their service. I, for the past several years, have had the opportunity to start my Memorial Day at Grandview Cemetery. Councilman Hines was there, and I think several of you have had the chance to go before, but the history in Chillicothe, and particularly that cemetery, the FW Post 108 and the effort they put into it, the band that comes from all over the state to perform, it is, it's just a nice moment to have the opportunity to stop and appreciate what those have done in the service of their country. So thank you to all the veterans serving now, who have served, and for all those who make that display a royally morning special. This weekend is our citywide yard sale, so Friday, Saturday, Sunday. I wouldn't steal the auditor's thunder. I won't speak anymore of that, but I think we'll be having the yard sale at our house and hope to see many, many people out in the nice weather. And immediately following that, this week from yesterday, we will be starting large item pickup. Our yard waste pickup is underway. It appears that we made the right call by doing it on demand, because we do have relatively high volume on Mondays or Tuesdays after weekends, but as the week spreads out, there's less calls, so I think we would be running unnecessary routes. So please remember that you have that as an option, as well as the dump site over by IHOP. And with that, I will conclude my report.
Thank you, Mayor Finney. What are the hours on the dump site over by IHOP?
Thank you. Eight AM to 2 PM.
On Saturdays only.
On Saturdays only. Eight AM to 2 PM, Saturday mornings.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our auditor, Ms. Stutnag.
I just want to state my support on items five, eight, and eleven. I'm not going to go into detail, because it's already been done several times by the committee. But I just want to remind everyone about the yard sale. If you stop in my office by Wednesday, the end of the day, you can sign up to have your name on a map, and those maps will be discarded throughout the city.
Excellent. Thank you. I have nothing to report, but we move on to audience participation, and not seeing anybody in the audience this evening.
Do you have people in the audience? Just choose enough parks.
Tell us what you think of the auditor.
Here's our auditor. Here's our auditor tonight, right?
Need a raise.
The auditor's son is here with us tonight, and we have one member of the media over here this evening.
He needs a raise, too.
Go back when he's here.
Kev needs a raise.
At this time, we're moving into old business. Anybody have any old business they'd like to bring up? Yes, Ms. Florima?
I don't know if it's exactly old business, but I didn't report last time because our cameras weren't working, and I wanted to be able to publicly thank all the presenters for our Arbor Day. We had 220 fourth grade students. We had beautiful weather. The mayor attended. We planted a tree, but we had a couple of new vendors, and the kids really appreciated the day. And they get very excited about the different programming. And also on that day, we also have kind of a beautification award, and this year it went to Cindy Henderson. If you have an opportunity to look at the work that she's done over on Water Street, and she's worked closely with the Tree Commission to beautify that area, so I would like to thank her for doing her part to make Chillicothe look better. And I would also like to remind people out there that there will be programming in various parks throughout the summer for children. This will range probably from the ages of five to 12, and it will be on the city's website, which parks, what time. And, but until then, you're welcome to call the Parks and Recreation Department to get information for that. Also, the pool opened this weekend. Things went very well. And there will also be, there are family passes available, and there will also be discounts for swimming on Friday afternoons, and those will also be the days that the Chillicothe City Schools will have their free lunch. Their blue bus will be down there on Friday, so it should work out really well. I look forward to them participating with the Parks and Recreation Department for bringing that to our city. And as of now, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all good news. Anybody else have anything for old business? Mr. Hines?
I'd just like to also thank President Arnold, to thank the mayor and Mr. Carmen, our city chief of structure, for the job they've done in lieu of the closed yard side. I think those Saturday hours have worked really, really well, and the pickup has done really well for nothing but good things about that. So thank you. Look forward to finding out what the plan is moving forward. And concur with the mayor on the observance at Grandview. My family and I have made a tradition in the last several years to attend, have an observance somewhere, and that's always been the best. And those guys who present and the band make it a very amazing event, and so I'm grateful for those men. I'm more grateful for all the servicemen in military who've paid an amazing price for us to be free, and thank you all. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hines.
You know, I might add to that. Yacht Township has a nice job maintaining that cemetery.
They do.
They deserve some credit, too. Mr. Fosson, pile your volume.
Any other old business? Petitions and correspondence received by the clerk?
I have nothing to report on tonight, Mr. President.
Okay. Before we move on to new business, we have a couple of council members that aren't here this evening. Anybody have a motion to excuse the Councilman, Mr. Florima? Excuse Ms. Fairchild and Ms. Kearney?
Absolutely.
Seconded by Mr. Hines. Roll call on that motion.
Tatman.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
So we have excused Ms. Fairchild and Ms. Kearney. New business? Committee assignments and meeting dates? And after the flurry of committee assignments that we had, we only had one this last week, and it was, I don't know what I have in front of me. Anyway, it was to have $2,500 taken from Parks and Rec and another $2,500 is going from my recollection from recreation to pay for some of our share for mowing Coppell Field, which we jointly shared that responsibility with the county, and that's the only new committee assignment that we've had for this last time. And the only meeting date, unless anybody has any to bring up, I just heard here at the meeting, and that was July, for the public hearing, July, what date did you say?
July 9th, second regular meeting in July.
July 9th, and had it at, what, 7:00? Or just right prior to our meeting?
7:30, I think, would be sufficient. I don't anticipate it taking.
Okay. July 9th at 7:30, a public hearing on item number 10 on our agenda this evening. And with that, we move into legislation. So whenever you're ready, Mr. Fosson, I'll number one.
Third reading of an ordinance authorizing the City of Chillicothe to accept donations for the city's annual Fourth of July fireworks display. Third reading.
Roll call on that legislation?
Tatman.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And that resolution has passed. Item number three.
Second reading of an ordinance accepting an Ohio courts technology grant in the amount of $38,350 and declaring an emergency. Second reading. Let me say that I did get an email from Lisa at the Chillicothe Municipal Court, and she wondered why that was not passed at the last reading meeting, so that's just for your intuition.
Okay. Make a motion to waive the three-day rule.
I'll second.
I have a motion to waive the three-day rule, seconded by Mr. Florima. So roll call on that motion, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Roll call on the legislation.
Tatman.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And that has passed. Item number four.
Second reading of an ordinance acknowledging and granting continued use of an encroachment on the public right-of-way easement to Teresa Lynn Reinhardt and her successors in interest for a garage as currently constructed at 497 North High Street, Chillicothe, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Second reading.
And then I will move to next meeting. Item number five.
First reading of an ordinance unappropriating $284,953.48 in brought-forward 2017 paving program funds, appropriating an additional $350,000 for the 2018 paving program, and appropriating $227,200 for city street maintenance and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Mr. Tatman.
At this time, I'd like to request that we waive the three-day rule.
You have a motion to waive the three-day rule, seconded by Ms. Neal. Roll call on that motion.
Tatman.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Roll call on the legislation.
Tatman.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And a motion that's passed. Roll call on the legislation.
Tatman.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number seven.
First reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 1179.08, general requirements, permanent signs of the codified ordinances of the City of Chillicothe, Ohio. First reading.
Now we'll move on. Item number eight.
First reading of an ordinance authorizing the Service Department to use appropriated capital funds to repair a city-owned vehicle and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Mr. Cole.
At this time, I would ask that we please waive the three-day rule.
A motion to waive the three-day rule, seconded by Ms. And that ordinance has passed. Item number seven.
First reading of an ordinance amending chapter eleven seventy-nine point zero eight, general requirements, permanent signs of the codified ordinances of the city of Chillicothe, Ohio. First reading.
That will move on. Item number eight.
First reading of an ordinance authorizing the service department to use appropriated capital funds to repair a city-owned vehicle and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Mr. Crowe?
At this time, I would ask that we please waive the three read rule.
Motion to waive the three read rule, seconded by Ms. Patrick. Roll call on that motion?
Chapman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
That motion has passed. Roll call on the legislation?
Chapman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
And that motion has passed. Roll call on the legislation?
Chapman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number ten.
First reading of an ordinance approving the action of the planning commission of the city of Chillicothe in rezoning property located at four fifty-six Western Avenue, Chillicothe, Ohio, from residential office to general commercial. First reading.
That, that will move on. And item number eleven, we added to the agenda tonight.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating two million, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars to fund the Transit Department Rosco program and declaring an emergency. First reading.
And Ms. Patrick?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the three read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three read rule, seconded by Mr. Crowe. Roll call on that motion?
Chapman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.